The meeting will please come to order. Good evening, everyone. My name is Trippie Congo, President of Wilmington City Council, and on behalf of all of my colleagues here on council, we just want to thank everyone who has joined us here in council chambers and also for everyone who is viewing virtually. Today is Thursday, October the 16th, and we will begin with our opening prayer from Mary Elena Rivera.
Heavenly Father, we have assembled to handle the affairs of our city. As we do so, we ask for your guidance and understanding. We pray that our city reaches a place of peace and safety, keep us out of harm's way, and bless those who are in authority. Let respect be key in all our endeavors. Padre celestial, nos hemos reunido para manejar los asuntos de nuestra ciudad. Al hacerlo, le pedimos su orientación y comprensión. Oramos para que nuestra ciudad alcance un lugar de paz y seguridad, que nos mantenga fuera del peligro, y beneficiar a los que están en autoridad. Que el respeto sea clave en todos nuestros esfuerzos. Amen.
And now, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Owens.
Present.
Councilwoman Darby. Councilwoman Oliver. Councilwoman Harley.
Present.
Councilwoman Willauer.
Present.
Councilwoman McCoy.
Here.
Councilwoman Johnson. Councilwoman Field.
Present.
Councilwoman Bracy. Councilwoman Cabrera.
Present.
Councilman Hackett.
Here.
Councilman Spadola.
Present.
President Congo.
Here.
Nine present and five absent, four absent, sorry.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Johnson has asked to be excused this evening. We will have the reading of the minutes from our previous meeting.
October 2nd, 2025, City Council met in regular session with remote participation on the above date at 6:33 PM. President Ernest M. Congo II presiding. The opening prayer was done by Mary Elena Rivera, Deputy City Clerk.
I move the minutes be accepted as written.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. The minutes be accepted as written on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. Our committee reports, please.
October 6th, 2025, President and members of council. Ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance and Economic Development Committee, met by anchor location and remote participation to who was referred ordinance number 25-054 entitled, "An Ordinance Establishing a Temporary Moratorium on Foreclosures Due to Property Tax Increases, As Long as the Owner Is on a Payment Plan." Have given this ordinance careful review and recommend council vote on it at an upcoming council meeting. Respectfully submitted, those members of the Finance and Economic Development Committee. Those members present, Councilwoman Harley, Councilwoman Bracy, Councilwoman Darby, Councilwoman Hackett, Councilwoman Oliver, Councilwoman Spadola, and President Congo.
I move the committee report BBC recorded and filed.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to report BBC recorded and filed on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried.
October 6th, 2025, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance and Economic Development Committee, met by anchor location and remote participation to who was referred ordinance number 25-057 entitled, "An Ordinance Constituting Amendment Number One to the Fiscal Year 2026 Annual Operating Budget, Being an Ordinance to amend Substitute Number One to Ordinance Number 25-009." Have given this ordinance careful review and recommend council vote on it at an upcoming council meeting. Respectfully submitted, those members of the Finance and Economic Development Committee. Those members present, Councilwoman Harley, Councilwoman Bracy, Councilwoman Darby, Councilman Hackett, Councilwoman Oliver, Councilwoman Spadola, and President Congo.
I move the committee report BBC recorded and filed.
Second.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to report BBC recorded and filed on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried.
October 6th, 2025, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance and Economic Development Committee, met by anchor location and remote participation to who was referred ordinance number 25-058 entitled, "An Ordinance to amend Chapter 44 of the City Code to exempt from the city's earned income tax the wages and compensation paid by the United States to any person for active service in the uniformed services of the United States." Have given this ordinance careful review and recommend council vote on it at an upcoming council meeting. Respectfully submitted, those members of the Finance and Economic Development Committee. Those members present, Councilwoman Harley, Councilwoman Bracy, Councilwoman Darby, Councilman Hackett, Councilwoman Oliver, Councilwoman Spadola, and President Congo.
I move the committee report BBC recorded and filed.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to report BBC recorded and filed on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. This time, we will have our City Treasurers' report.
October 16th, 2025, total investments $529,467,896.07 Total cash on hand, $17,074,336.72 Grand total, $546,542,232.79 Submitted City Treasurer, Dwayne Sims.
I move the Treasurer's report BBC recorded and filed.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to report BBC recorded and filed on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. I'll accept the motion to move to accept all non-legislative business.
So move.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to accept all non-legislative business on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. At this time, we will have our recognition resolutions, Councilwoman Cabrera.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to invite to join me Angel Nieves, Giovanni Paredes, Yosmaira Ramos, and William Will Resto, and your family members and friends can join you up here if you would like. As we continue the celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month, which just ended yesterday, following something that our president did a couple years ago with recognizing members of the African-American community during Black History Month. I'm recognizing members of the Hispanic community during this time, and the people that are being recognized, come right behind me, come fill in, are, as I call them, the unsung heroes, the people that are behind the scenes, that make things happen, that volunteer, that contribute to their community, the people that are not in the limelight, but they're very much a part of our community, and they contribute so much, so they do deserve to be recognized. And if I can have the honorees come a little closer and the family members stand behind them. Okay, so we'll get started. Sponsor, Councilmember Maria Cabrera. Whereas it is the sense of City Council to honor individuals, organizations, and occasions that demonstrate outstanding achievement and deserving of recognition and acknowledgement. Councilmember Maria Cabrera recognizes Angel Nieves, Giovanni Paredes, Yosmaira Ramos, and William Resto, who merit such distinction. And whereas Angel Nieves is a native of Puerto Rico and has been a member of the Wilmington community for over 20 years, as the founder of City Pride, Angel has organized numerous events and outreach to foster inclusivity and empowerment within the LGBTQ+ community for the past seven years. He has served on the Board of Nuestras Raíces NR Delaware, where he has worked tirelessly to champion diversity and inclusivity. By connecting communities with the tools for growth, Angel also dedicates his time to food distribution at the Community Engagement Education Building and is devoted to creating positive change in Wilmington and beyond. And whereas Giovanni Paredes, also known as Young Seda, is a Wilmington native raised in an immigrant household in the Riverside Projects. He has transformed his love for his hip-hop into a mission to uplift his city and inspire the next generation. His standout track Bucket 26 and others like it reflect his journey of resilience and hope. He has also served as a mentor in music and financial literacy with Public Allies Delaware, Urban Promise Wilmington, local schools, and community centers. He uses his voice to motivate, heal, and remind others that purpose can rise from any place. And whereas Yosmaira Ramos has been the owner of the internationally acclaimed Merengue House Bar and Restaurant for the past five years, she has been actively engaged in the community by regular hosting and sponsoring networking sessions, organizing volunteer platforms, and facilitating community engagement for neighborhood groups, nonprofit organizations, and civic leaders. Yosmaira also serves as a member of the Delaware Restaurant Association and on the Board of St. Paul Roman Catholic Church. She exemplifies the critical impact of Hispanic women entrepreneurs in shaping a stronger, more inclusive Wilmington. And whereas William Will Resto is a Wilmington native, a proud Puerto Rican and a graduate of Delaware's vocational school system. As founder and owner of Resto Bell Bonds and leader of the Livingston Resto Project, or LRP, Will has helped numerous individuals access second chances and restore their lives for more than 25 years. He has been a proud member of the Wilmington Police Athletic League, PAL, for over 15 years, a community leader with NR Delaware, a sponsor of the Roberto Clemente League Baseball League since 2013, and chairs the Fifth Representative District Committee of the Newcastle County Democratic Party. I will also add that his uncle was the first Hispanic council member to serve on this council. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Wilmington that this council is pleased to recognize Angel Nieves, Giovanni Paredes, Yosmaira Ramos, and William Resto for their valuable contributions to the City of Wilmington. As we commemorate Hispanic Heritage Month 2025, we honor these community leaders' unwavering dedication to community uplift, empowerment, diversity, and inclusion. Job well done. So I will ask each of you to come and just briefly make comments. Usually, we have three minutes, so we don't want to do three minutes per person, maybe just a minute, so thank you. We'll start with Angel Nieves.
Whew. Good evening, everyone. It is a true honor to be here and accept this leadership for the community. Sorry, I'm a little nervous, y'all. So, to me, being a leader isn't about a title or recognition. It's about service, about how, about showing up, listening, and working side by side with others to build something better. Leadership means putting people first, making decisions with empathy, and ensuring no voice is left unheard. Our community is strong not because we are, not because we are the same, but because we are different. And we bring those differences together to support, uplift, and grow. My goal as a leader is to help create a space where everyone feels valued, safe, empowered, to make a difference. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for having me here. It's a blessing to be here. As we know, Riverside is now Imani Village, and just seeing the transformation in the community over the span of 20 years is beautiful. So I'm thankful to be here, and thank you.
Yosmaira Ramos.
Sorry, I'm so nervous. First and foremost, I want to say thank you to the community to be able to serve the community where I grew up at. And I want to thank Maria for holding my hands since I was a child, and she's been my guidance ever since. And I'm here to serve the community, and thank you once again for the support.
And you feed us as well.
Yes.
She forgot to mention the most important part, that she was one of the Miss Hispanic Delaware contestants. That's where I first met her. She joined the pageant to get away from working in her parents' restaurant, because she was one of those children slaves that the, you know, parents put them to work at a young age. But look at her now, an entrepreneur. Thank you, William Resto.
Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, I want to give honor and glory to my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for everything he has done for me. Without him, none of this would be possible. So his grace, mercy, and purpose continue to be a guide every step of I take. I want to thank my parents, William and Carmen, who from an early age taught me the importance of helping others and serving the community. I also want to honor my uncle, Antonio Resto, the first Puerto Rican councilman here in Wilmington. His courage to lead and open doors for others inspired me to follow his footsteps. I'm grateful for the organizations that allow me to serve. Wilmington PAL, Nuestras Raíces of Delaware, the Newcastle County Democrats. I also have the privilege of serving on children's ministry at Faith City Family Church under Pastor Steve Hare, where I hope guide our youth to grow in faith, leadership, and purpose to Councilwoman Cabrera, fellow councilpeople. I'm truly humbled. I'm usually the one working behind the scenes, getting things done quietly. So being recognized publicly means more than, more than words can express. I also want to thank my dedicated staff at Resto Bell Bonds. Your commitment, professionalism, and compassion make what we do possible every single day. We've helped countless of families find hope and second chances, and I'm proud to lead such an incredible team. A special thanks to my mentor, former Speaker of the House, Terry Spence, for his wisdom, friendship, and guidance over the years. You taught me that true leadership begins with service. To my children, I've got one back here now, Brandon, my daughter Caitlin and her husband Zach. You inspire me daily to be the best version of myself. And now, the most important one. To my beautiful wife of 30 years, Candace. Words will never be enough. You are my heart, my strength, my safe place. Through every season, the victories and the challenges, you have stood beside me with faith, patience, and unwavering love. You are the reason I'm able to pour into others because you continuously pour into me. You are my rock, my covering, and my greatest blessing. For that, I thank you. And may God continue to bless this great city of Wilmington and all those who serve to make it stronger. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you all.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
One second before you leave, please.
First off, congratulations to each and every one of you for being honored here tonight. Thank you for all the work that you do here in the city. I've met all of you. Shout out to Merengue House, one of my favorite places to go in the city. Young Seda, I've listened to your music. I've seen the work you've done with Public Allies. Will, you got me involved with the PAL again. But no, the work that you do in the community, the heart that you have for the community, the events that you help put on, and then Nuestras Raíces, I'm sorry if I said that wrong, y'all. But the work you also do in the community, we work in the community service building. I see you constantly moving around, always busy, always working, always with passion on your face as well too, Angel. So again, thank you all for all the work that you do for the city, and you make it better. Go Birds!
Councilmember Willauer.
Yes, I just want to echo what Councilmember Owens said. Thank you all for your service. You know, I know many, almost all of you through, through the years, and it's just great to see how you've grown and how you are giving back to the community. So, and I just really appreciate the vision that you have and that you're willing to share it with the rest of us. So, thank you.
I also want to congratulate all of you. Just want to echo the same comments as my colleagues. I am connected to all of you. But I had no idea that you were a part of Riverside Bucket 26. You don't even look that old. That is, that is amazing. That was, what year was that? That was back in the, was that the? Like the original Riverside Bucket 26? Or like a remix? Oh, okay, Osgraysay. Don't even look that old, but congratulations to all of you. Thank all of you for everything that you do. I'd like to recognize councilmembers Darby, Bracy, and Oliver. Councilmember Owens.
Sorry, I'm not used to doing this. Can Kofa and everyone here with him, please come up, please? Aja.
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to honor this man behind me. He's a Marine veteran, but he has continued to highlight the great culture that we have here in the city of Wilmington with his Fashion Week, Morovia Fashion Week, which has tied the roots of Liberia into the fabric of the city of Wilmington. So I wanted to make sure that we honor the great diversity that we have here in this great city. So we have a resolution for you, and I'll read it. Whereas it's the sense of City Council to honor individual organizations and occasions that demonstrate outstanding achievement and deserving recognition and acknowledgement, Morovia Fashion Week 2025 is one such occasion. And whereas the Fourth Annual Morovian Fashion Week USA was held August 15th to August 17th, 2025, at the Queen right here in downtown Wilmington, the activities of the week highlighted the importance of international collaboration, celebration, and the rich heritage and global influence of the African fashion. And while fostering opportunities for local designers, vendors, and businesses to gain a broader audience, whereas Morovia Week Fashion Week USA 2025 is not just an event, it's a movement of style, culture, and purpose. Based on similar events in Morovia, Liberia, it is the vision of the retired US, United States Marine veteran Kofa Freeman to highlight our shared cultures. And let me tell you, it was an absolutely amazing event. Whereas the week extends beyond fashion, it also prioritizes global impact. A portion of the proceeds from the show is used to help 10 children in Liberia attend school this year, giving them the tools and opportunities they need to shape a brighter future, which is something that I think this council can all agree with. And lastly, whereas Wilmington is proud to be a city that supports diversity, artistic expression, and innovation, and acknowledges the significant role of cultural events like the Morovian Fashion Week USA, playing in strengthening our community ties, boosting our local economy... and the City Council of Wilmington commends the organizers, participants, sponsors of this Fashion Week for their efforts in advancing the creative economic and promoting cross, uh, cross-cultural understanding. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city of, or city, by the council of the city of Wilmington, that this council is pleased to recognize Morovian Fashion Week 2025 and its organizer, Kofa Freeman, for its outstanding contributions to arts, culture, and business landscape and extends its best wishes to many more successful events. Job well done.
Hi, everyone. Uh, my name is Kofa Freeman. I'm a US Marine Vet. This is Councilman Sad. I just want to say thank you for giving me this platform, for honoring us. Because we didn't do it for, to be honored. Uh, we did it because we felt like the city of Wilmington alone, the, the way the city is set up, everything the city has, uh, I wanted to highlight the city and bring my culture to the city. I want to thank my wife for letting me through a fashion show in a concert venue. Because no one is really doing that. I want to thank Ms. Aja for always supporting us for the first time we did it. To one of my producers, James, uh, to my assistant right there, Ms. Karina Dean, for supporting us. We also have a lot of staff that came from Arizona, California. Everyone came to the city and they loved the city. So I just want to thank you guys for honoring us today.
Councilmember Hackett?
Yeah, um, hold on now, Kofa. Don't go too far. Uh, many don't know, I went to this guy's wedding. And when I tell you, boy, I had a good time. Um, thank you for your union and inviting me. I truly appreciate that. I went to one of the first fashion shows. Um, and what I tell you, boy, they bring the culture. They bring the vibes. And I'm just happy that I was a part of it. I was happy to be a part of your journey. Keep doing the good work. Keep doing what you're doing, bringing other people to the city of Wilmington so that they can see what we are doing. Ms. Aja, thank you so much for the work you do. She was on me too. She was like, you better be there. So you know, I'm just happy to be able to be a participant, and hopefully next year we can participate and sponsor and be involved more with your organization, so.
Councilmember Bracy?
I just wanted to say, yeah, I just wanted to say, uh, congratulations. I didn't get a chance to go this year, but I went last year. And I posted some of the pictures and Aja knows I have family in Nigeria. And they were like, are you here? Are you here? Where's that party? And I was like, no, it's in Delaware. They're like, what? So I just want to say thank you for bringing that culture here to the city. And um, as Councilman Hackett said, I look forward to supporting you guys in the future.
Councilmember Oliver?
I'd just like to say congratulations. I haven't attended, but I saw a lot of pictures. And of course, Aja actually keeps me updated, but kudos to you. Keep up the good work.
Just one last thing. I, I think we have some models out here as well too, if you need some for nutshell.
Have a good one.
Definitely Oliver. Also, in the way of other recognitions, Councilwoman Cabrera recognized India Colon Diaz and Victor Rodriguez. Councilwoman Harley recognized Martha Morgan on her 46th year anniversary of Morgans of Delaware and the Faith Gallery Vision Center on their 10th anniversary celebration and the Wilmington International Film Festival. Councilwoman McCoy recognized I Am My Sister's Keeper Tea Party for 2025. And in the way of sympathy resolutions from all of council, a sympathy resolution for Master Corporal Richard Arnold Sutton, Senior, retired, from Councilwoman Cabrera. A sympathy resolution for Harvey, Alexander Harvey. And from Councilwoman Harley, a sympathy resolution for Richard Lamont Ellington. At this time, we will move to public comment. As a friendly reminder, you have three minutes for your, for your public comment. Once you have around 30 seconds left, I will give you a friendly reminder. If you want to state what district you reside in, you may, but you don't have to. And please don't direct your comments to any council member directly, but only to me as the president. First, we have Deacon Earl Tate III. The second. Thank you for joining us, Deacon.
Good evening. My name is Deacon Earl E. Tate, who's never late because he don't want to lose his pair of roller skates. And I like to, I like to say that I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna thank the, thank those, those, those people of whom, of whom came over and cleaned up, cleaned up those bottles and all from off that corner. Because, because, because I didn't want the kids, the kids to get out there, to get, to get hurt, to get hurt by no flying glass or so forth. They, they put, they put up a beautiful flower and everything is beautiful. And, and, and the kids, and the kids are out there playing and out there, and out there having fun. And, and, and I like to say thank you for that. But, but, but what I really like, what I really like to say is, wake up, wake up, America. Wake up. Because, because this, this guy that we have in the office now, it, 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 it's messing up things. He's turning people against people. He, he's trying to, he's trying to, he's trying to move, move everything his way. But, 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 but we can't have it because we are, we are the people of the United States. We, we are the people who live here together, who work here together, who, who have, who have friends, friends all over. And, and, and we, and we the people, we the people, uh, uh, ought to stand up and, and recognize it. And those of us that are in office, in the Congress, in the Senate, in the mayors, in the governors, wake up. Don't, don't, don't have them, don't have them sending troops, troops in your, in your state that, that does not need to be here. Because, 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 because we are the ones that take care of it, take care of everything here. And that's the way that it should be. We, we are the people. And that's, and that's the way that it should be because, uh, because if we don't, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna let everything go down the drain. But, but, but we, we got to stand together, work together, and, and encourage one another. Because, because, because through that, through that, we can, we can build up, build up the United States the way that it should be. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Cheyenne Miller. Okay. Online, we have Jesse Samlook?
Yes, just doing a quick audio check.
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you for joining us.
Uh, thanks, President Congo. Uh, it's Jesse Samlook. Um, just a, a quick introduction about myself, um, from the 6th District. In fact, uh, my grandfather actually used to serve on city council from 1968 to 1984. I just want to, uh, give a couple of comments on the piece of legislation to include ordinance 25-058. It's uh, number 0118 on tonight's agenda. So, a little bit about me, I'm a reservist in the United States Public Health Service. Um, I am prior Army as well. I'm prior military, uh, just like um, Councilman Spadola and uh, Councilwoman Darby. I think she's still an NCO in the National Guard. So basically, what's, what's happening is, um, if we were to go and act, if I was to get mobilized, I would be assessed a wage tax. Whereas if I was back in the Army, uh, I wouldn't be. So, there's, the bit of issue there is if I was to do the same exact duty as the, as, when I was in the Army Reserve, that I would be in the Commission Corps of the United States Public Health Service, where's the justification with that in being taxed? So yes, the mission sets different. I don't carry a rifle anymore. But um, basically, uh, the issue is to straighten out or correct or amend the, the code to update that to include all uniformed service branches, including my branch. And I'm here as a resource. If there's any questions, I'll be on, uh, for uniformed service legislation. It's preferred to use uniformed services instead of military. But uh, if there's any questions on my branch of service, um, that's fine. I'll be online. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That does conclude public comment for this evening. At this time, we will move to legislative business. Councilman Owens?
Yes, Mr. President. I have a ordinance to present and call for the third and final reading.
Ordinance 25-054, Agenda Number 0113. An ordinance to establish a temporary moratorium on foreclosures due to property tax increases as long as the owner is on a payment plan.
Mr. President, I move that that is known as the Enacting Clause of the Ordinance and call for the yea and nay vote.
It's been properly moved and second, that be known as the Enacting Clause of the Ordinance and called for a yea and nay vote. On the question.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. So this ordinance again comes because for the first time in 40 years, Wilmington, um, and the whole state of Delaware has on, uh, undergone property tax reassessment for the first time, um, in a very long time. And I just want to be very clear that while this was a long overdue step, to bring us into the modern times, this change has created some real pain and confusion for a lot of our residents here in the city of Wilmington. And I've, over the last few months, I've heard from seniors, working families, lifelong Wilmington homeowners who are scared and frustrated about their tax bills coming up. Um, and we know that their property values have jumped overnight, which means their tax bills jumped overnight. So this bill is just to make sure that there's no, um, no one losing their home who's actively trying to work with the city of Wilmington, um, and trying to pay their bill. But we also recognize that some people, their, their tax bills went up by over, uh, 25%. So again, that's why I brought this bill forward. I want to thank Councilman Hackett, Councilwoman Oliver, and Councilwoman Willhauer for co-sponsoring this, um, with me. Um, and I take any questions.
Thank you. I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor, please. Councilmember McCoy and Hackett.
Yes, thank you. Um, I would also like to be added as a co-sponsor, and I think this is a great piece of legislation. The fact that we are recognizing what's happening here and we're trying to make certain that we get in front of it when it comes to our homeowners, that we do not want to see anyone to be, um, have any type of, uh, circumstances that are beyond our control. We want to make certain that we control that at some point. Losing, losing homes though is something that it seems that, uh, our director Brett Taylor stated that it may not, like, this is something that probably would not occur. If you've already paid your taxes and you're up to date, this may not happen. But the fact that, um, Councilman Owens actually was a little bit more, um, you know, proactive, I appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hackett, followed by Councilmember Spadola, then Councilmember Harley.
Thank you, President. Um, I just want to thank, uh, Councilmember Owens for bringing this to, bringing this forward. You know, we look in our community today and we got to recognize the different things that's going on. People high electric bills, water bills, and more. And we try to figure out how we're going to have people in our community thrive. So I'm just happy that, you know, we sit as a council and we have the back for our people in the city of Wilmington. So, you know, and I, I think I, I talked to some of our staff and, you know, we might have a, a world, a world record for having the longest outstanding, uh, property taxes, uh, going over 40 years. So, you know, we did a property tax and, you know, to some, it wasn't accurate, especially to our residents in the city of Wilmington. So, you know, I'm, I'm happy that our, you know, Director Brett Taylor said, hey, listen, sometimes this, you know, this is not going to happen on his call, but I'm glad that council made it to be their call that it wouldn't happen as well. So, once again, thank you for the great work and let's continue to do it together.
Councilmember Spadola, followed by Councilmember Harley, then Councilmember Willhauer.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, yes, please add me as a co-sponsor. I, I think this is thoughtfully written. One, we might have residents paying taxes who have an active appeal and that they might be paying taxes on an assessed value that is overinflated. So to me, that would be tremendously unfair for somebody to get caught up because they're paying unfair taxes because their appeal hasn't been heard. And two, I'm always focused on negative incentives that legislation might unintentionally create. Uh, but with this, it's time bound. It expires, uh, a year after. And ideally, that is when we will have this assessment situation, uh, in, in, in a, in a better way. And no, this won't be necessary. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harley, followed by Councilmember Willhauer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I too want to be added as a co-sponsor. And I want to thank, uh, Councilmember Owens for, uh, solidifying, uh, what we are already doing. And this is just one of many other pieces of legislation that will be, um, presented in support of Wilmington residents. So, um, it's definitely in the right direction and well thought out, good common sense piece of legislation. And I am happy to be a co-sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Willhauer, followed by Councilmember Darby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Owens, I think this is great legislation and I, um, echo what other council members have said about how it's really important to, um, get ahead of this issue. And I, I just wanted to, uh, I, I don't know how to do this, but I wanted to suggest a friendly amendment that, um, instead of 12 months, it'd be 18 months, just to give a little bit more time for the whole assessment, issue to be, you know, worked out and make sure people are protected during that time. So.
All right, thank you. Is that something that you want to make? You're, you're recommending that amendment or you're asking the sponsors?
I guess I would, do I say I would like to suggest a friendly amendment?
Uh, it's your call.
Yes. I'd just like to suggest a friendly amendment.
You're just, you just want to change it to 18?
Yeah.
That's fine.
We'd have to take, we'd have to take a vote on it.
Yeah, my bad. You want me to say it? Should I say it? I, I make a motion, uh, you talk about section two.
Yeah, section two.
I make a motion, um, to strike where it says 12 in the number 12, um, and change that to the number 18, um, and the word 18 as well too.
All right, any questions on the amendment? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Amendment, amendment passed. Councilmember Cabrera, I'm sorry, Councilmember Darby, then Councilmember Cabrera.
Yes, uh, thank you. I'd just like to be added as a co-sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cabrera.
Same thing for me. Good legislation. I also would like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Councilmember Oliver?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to echo what everyone else stated that I think this is a great piece of legislation to, um, support the residents throughout the state and especially in the city of Wilmington. Been to several meetings. I went to Dover, spoke to President Prossicola, Tizzie. So I think this is a great piece of legislation to combine with some of the work they're doing in Dover. So kudos to you. Thank you.
Councilmember Hackett, followed by Councilmember Bracy.
Thank you, President. Uh, I just had one last, uh, thought here. Um, you know, when we have good legislation that's going to go forward to our people, I just want to make sure that we find ways to, uh, market it and communicate it to the whole city of Wilmington so that they know exactly what's going on here in council because this affects them immediately. And I just want to make sure that we all sit down, once this is all over, to make sure that we're, you know, blasting this out here so that our residents see this day in and day out. You know, that they have an opportunity, some, some weight is taken off their shoulders.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Bracy?
Just add me as a co-sponsor, please.
Thank you. Seeing all the hands raised, I return back to the sponsor. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Owens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Willhauer?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bracy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilman Hackett?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
12 yays and 1%.
Declared adopted. Councilmember Darby?
Yes, um, Mr. President, I will be holding Agenda, um, Number 0122 this evening.
Okay.
And, um, Mr. President, I have a resolution to present.
Resolution 25-055, Agenda Number- Resolution 25-055, Agenda Number 0123, whereas this Wilmington City Council 2022 to 2025 Strategic Plan prioritizes a stabilized Wilmington that develops code enforcement.
I move this resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea and nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that the resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea or nay vote. On the question.
Yes, so this piece of legislation already established a subcommittee of the Community Development and Urban Planning Committee, where this subcommittee will be focused on really talking about reintegration of sex offenders in different communities into our residential areas and what that looks like. This piece of legislation tonight actually appoints the following individuals to the Reintegration Subcommittee. I'm going to read the names. And sorry if I butcher any names. Tiffany Baysmore Jackson, Tisha Stewart, Joseph Connor, Stephen Stockton, Evan Douglas, Quincy Thomas, Jamie Martinez, Starr Wilson, and Hanif Salam. These are members of the Reintegration Subcommittee. So they'll be reviewing like existing code, evaluating best practices, and engaged with a range of stakeholders to give us legislative recommendation to find a balance between placement and safety in our community in regards to group homes and halfway houses. So, yeah, that is that piece of resolution.
All right, thank you. Seeing no hands raised, clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Owens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Willheller?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bracy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilman Hackett?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
President Cago?
Yes.
12 yays and 1 absent.
Declared adopted.
Yes, I'm asking to be excused. Thank you.
Yes, you may be excused. Thank you. Councilwoman Harley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I have an ordinance to present and call for the third and final reading, but before that, I have a floor amendment to Ordinance Number 25-057. And I would like to make a motion for the floor amendment at this time as it relates to the changes on Page 2 of Ordinance 25-057. On Page 2, the 8th Whereas Clause. Give my council colleagues time to turn to that page, Page 2, the 8th Whereas Clause.
Excuse me, Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Can you make the motion first?
Okay, the motion.
No, on your, the regular.
Okay.
Call for the third and final.
Call for the, for the third and final reading? Okay. All right, I would like to call for the third and final reading first.
Ordinance 25-057, Agenda Number 0117, an ordinance constituting Amendment Number 1 to the fiscal year 2026 Annual Operating Budget, being an ordinance to amend Substitute Number 1 to Ordinance Number 25-009.
Mr. President, I move that it be known as the Enacting Clause of the Ordinance and call for the yea and nay vote.
It's been properly moved and second that be known as the Enacting Clause of the Ordinance and called for a yea or nay vote on the question.
Okay, yes. Again, Mr. President, I would like to make a floor amendment. And as I stated on Page 2, the where, the 8th Whereas Clause, on Page 2, the 8th Whereas Clause, we're going to strike the phrase interior assessments and insert the phrase the collection of data to improve the accuracy of the assessment in its place. We're going to insert the phrase facilitation of low-income homeowners' participation and before the phrase the Newcastle County Board of Assessment Reviews Appeals Process. On Page 2, the 9th Whereas Clause, we're going to strike the phrase conducting interior assessments and insert the phrase collecting such data in its place. And then on Page 5, on the synopsis in that particular area, synopsis and fiscal impact. In the 5th line, we're going to strike the phrase conducting interior assessments and insert the phrase collecting data to improve the accuracy of the recent real property reassessment conducted by Newcastle County in its place. And then the last amendment is in the 7th line, strike the phrase the recent real property assessment conducted by Newcastle County and insert the phrase such reassessment. And I want to also mention that this definitely came about as it related to conversations related to some of the language that may be an issue for some residents as we move forward with the ordinance and once it's enacted and once we start the work, that we make sure that the work that they're doing is not limited. So the purpose of this amendment is to be more inclusive of what is needed for the vendor that is selected to do the job that they would like to do.
All right, thank you.
So we're supposed to be seconding the amendment, correct?
Yes.
All right, any questions on the amendment? Councilmember Hackett.
Thank you, President. If you could, I know you gave an overview of it, but if you could explain more in depth why these changes were made? And like, were they made today?
No, thank, Mr. President?
Yes, Councilmember Harley.
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Hackett. They were not made today. About a week ago, Councilmember Willheller shared with me, the both of us was working on this legislation. And she mentioned that in these particular sentences that she felt as though it should be more inclusive as it related to the company that gets selected to make sure that they're not limited and that they can be more inclusive of what is needed to do the assessment. So to answer your question, it was, that's how this happened. And we reached out to the administration. We collaborated on what the language should look like. So it was not recently, it was discussed by myself, Councilmember Willheller, and the administration and our staff.
Councilmember McCoy, followed by Councilmember Owens.
Thank you. So I guess my only question was just clarifying that by removing the conducting interior assessments that you are not limiting, just doing interior. Is that what you're stating?
Correct.
Okay.
All right.
Councilmember Owens.
Councilwoman McCoy asked what I was going to ask. I just wanted to make sure that this will allow them to pull the permitting data, something that Tyler Technology didn't do last go around. It gives them the tool to still do internal. But this, making sure that they have that permitting data is really important. So thank you, Councilwoman Harley.
Councilwoman Willheller.
Yes, I just wanted to underline, like, since this legislation was drafted, there have been, as Councilwoman Oliver pointed out, the General Assembly has been meeting and the city of Wilmington has, you know, also presented information there. And it's just become clear that there were some data gaps in how the assessments were done for the city of Wilmington. So just to give flexibility to bring in all that data, Councilwoman Harley, and I thought it might be a good idea to, instead of strictly limiting it just to interior assessments, have it be, you know, additional data, which could include interior assessments, but could include more than interior assessments.
Councilmember Spadola.
See, are we selling the amendment? We're selling, never mind.
Any other questions for the amendment? All right, we'll take a vote on the amendment. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Amendment passed. Councilmember Spadola.
Thank you. Yes, I've, initially, I was very positive and supportive of this. And then I had some thoughts that I still am reckoning with in the sense that, let's say we do this, we put out the half a million dollars. We give the hope to our residents that they're going to get a lower assessed value. We inconvenience them with the assessors coming through. All the meanwhile, we don't have any assurances from the county that they will accept the data that we give them. But after thinking about it and having some conversations with the county, I understand that the county can't commit to the new data without having seen it, without knowing how it's being done. And so I just kind of reframed it in the sense that I look at this half a million dollars. Another point, we're also, whenever this gets done, the assessment value is from July 1, 2024. Whenever this gets done, there's going to be, you know, a lot can happen in the real estate market in 18 months, two years. So the values are going to be hard to match up regardless. But what I think this will do, is I look at this as an investment in getting the reassessment, the next reassessment done in a much better way. This will show us how much of a boondoggle Tyler put us in and ideally help us deal with, you know, the headache, the heartache, and the pocketbook ache that a lot of our residents are dealt with, thanks to Tyler. So I think the more data we have on how much really it was done poorly with the last reassessment, we'll be in a better spot next reassessment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Oliver.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Well, my take on it was I don't care if it's a half a million or if it was 25 million because this has affected individuals throughout the state. I'm just glad that Councilman Harley and everybody else that's on here as a co-sponsor, we're all on the same page to move the needle for the residents, for the city of Wilmington. And to me, it should be unlimited so we can come up with just something to assist for individuals who put in appeals that I've been talking to. I've been sharing this information, letting them know that the city of Wilmington is trying to do something to appease or find out if there's a solution. So I just feel as though at least we opened the door to try to do something for the residents.
Thank you. I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor. Councilman Hackett.
Yeah, thank you, President. For me, I think the real point here is, like you said, regardless of the dollar amount, we need the right data. We haven't had the right data in 40 years. So for us to be able to move forward, we got to make sure we're moving forward on the right foundation. So I agree with Councilman Spadola to make sure that no matter what, we're getting data, we're doing data the right way. Even if they accept it or not, at least we did our background and we stood up for our people, you know, in our community. I think that's the biggest thing. You look around, you know, I don't know any city or, you know, city that's saying, hey, listen, we don't got no voice here, but we're going to make our voice heard here. So, you know, I'm proud that the mayor's administration and our team got together to put some work together. So, thank you.
Councilmember Owens.
Again, thank you, Councilwoman Harley and Willheller for bringing this forward. I would like to be added as a co-sponsor. And again, Tyler Technology has been known to do this across the nation using mass appraisals, which has negatively impacted urban settings. So again, I'm glad that we were able to come up with a solution to hopefully rectify some of that and hopefully be able to make it more equitable for our residents here in the city of Wilmington. So again, thank you for that, both Councilwoman Harley and Willheller.
Thank you, Councilwoman Willheller.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, I wanted to say that this legislation just is about the efforts of a lot of people. A lot of council members, council leadership, who's spoken with the administration for many months since the new assessments came out. All the residents who have contacted your council members, who've contacted the administration about the issues you're facing with your assessed value. And I just think this is an example of city of Wilmington residents, elected leaders, working together to try to get a solution that's going to be best for the residents and the businesses in the city of Wilmington. So I want to thank Councilwoman Harley for your leadership on this and for everyone on council who's been really working hard to make sure that we we get fairness for residents and businesses in the city of Wilmington.
Thank you. Seeing all the hands raised, back to the sponsors.
Yes, Mr. President, I just want to make sure that we're just voting on the motion right now and that I will be presenting the actual ordinance after this is voted on. Is that correct?
No, we already voted.
We voted on the amendment.
Okay, so this is.
This is the ordinance.
This is it. Okay, so I just wanted to be clear because I have two pieces here and I just wanted to confirm. So I want to start off by, first of all, thanking the Mayor Carney and his administration, all of my city council colleagues that worked in collaboration of this legislation. The legislation represents both branches, the city of Wilmington together, our legislative branch, as well as our executive branch, by putting our Wilmington residents first to address the abnormalities, as we all know, of the Tyler Technologies report that negatively impacted our certain quality census tracts or neighborhoods in Wilmington. And this is a win for our residents as it relates to our mayor and city council when we first learned about the abnormalities and how these census tracts, Tyler Technologies knew about this back in February or March when we started having these conversations. So I just want to applaud our mayor for really taking this serious before the county came to the table, before the General Assembly came to the table. Mayor Carney was very interested in what we were going to do for the Wilmington residents. So I really wanted to make it clear that these conversations got started early on. Our leadership started talking about it. And then we had other council members that got in, came on board. I wanted to make sure, I give a shout out again to Councilmember Willheller for digging deep, doing a deep dive with the assessments and all the council members that pitched in and share their input as it related to our residents because we know that there was a major gap between the assessments and the market values for these particular quality census tracts that Tyler Technology pretty much just totally skewed the data. So I just wanted to say that. And then on the synopsis, I want to read that regarding this being the First Amendment to the Fiscal Year 2026 Annual Operating Budget, which was originally enacted in Substitute Number 1 to Ordinance Number 25-009. This ordinance authorizes an increase in the mayor's materials, supplies, and equipment general fund appropriation of $425,000 to enable the city to hire consultants to assist the city in conducting interior assessments and validating Tyler Technologies' mass appraisal reassessment model utilized for the recent real property reassessment conducted by Newcastle County. It also authorizes a fund balance transfer of $75,000 from the Tax Stabilization Reserve to the Neighborhood Stabilization Fund to establish a grant program to provide financial assistance to low-income homeowners for filing appeals with the Newcastle County Board of Assessment Reviews related to the real property reassessment. The fiscal impact of this ordinance is a reduction of the fiscal year 2026 budgeted operating surplus from $2.7 million to $2.275 million and a $75,000 reduction to the Tax Stabilization Reserve. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Owens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Willheller?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bracy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilman Hackett?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
President Cago?
Yes.
11 yays and 2 absent.
Declared adopted.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading.
Ordinance Number 25-060, Agenda Numbers 0124. An ordinance to authorize and approve an agreement between the city of Wilmington and Ring Central, Inc. for a communications platform.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance to authorize and approve an agreement between the city of Wilmington and Ring Central, Inc. for a communications platform.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that it be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember McCoy?
Yes. Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading.
Ordinance Number 25-061, Agenda Number 0125. An ordinance to An ordinance to amend Chapter 39 of the city code to allow retired police officers to serve on the police pension board.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend Chapter 39 of the city code to allow retired police officers to serve on the police pension board.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer it to the Public Safety Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer it to the Public Safety Committee.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the third and final reading.
Ordinance number 25-058, agenda number 0118. An ordinance to amend Chapter 44 of the city code to exempt from the city's earned income tax the wages and compensation paid by the United States to any person for active service in the uniformed services of the United States.
All right, Mr. President, I move that that be known as the enacting clause of the ordinance and call for a yea-nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that be known as the enacting clause of the ordinance and called for a yea-nay vote.
Okay, on the question, actually, Mr. Samlock was on the public comment, and he gave comments about the reason why he contacted me about the wage tax. He made certain that I understood exactly what it was, and to make certain that we were including other branches of uniformed service. So this was something that seemed fairly easy, having talked to law, and then also getting back to the finance, well, to Mr. Taylor at the finance, this was not a heavy lift at all, and we just want to make certain that all those who are serving, that they're able to do so without being taxed extra.
Thank you. I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor. Councilmember Cabrera.
I would like to be added as a co-sponsor as well, thank you.
Councilmember Harley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Councilmember McCoy for producing and presenting this legislation. This is a good piece of legislation, and of course, we know it's in the right direction. And as it relates to our constituency, this is the kind of legislation that we definitely want to have all hands on deck to make sure that everyone is feeling inclusive, and in this case, in our United States services. So thank you, Councilmember McCoy, and I'm glad to be a co-sponsor.
Thank you. Councilmember Will Hour.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands raised, back to the sponsor.
I have nothing more, you call for the vote.
All right, thank you. Clerk, please call for the rule.
Councilwoman Owens.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Will Hour.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy.
Yes.
Councilwoman Field.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bracy.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Yes.
Councilwoman Spadola.
Yes.
President Congo.
Yes.
Eleven yeas and two absent.
Declared adopted.
I have nothing.
Thank you. Councilmember Bracy.
Mr. President, I have a resolution to present.
Resolution 25-056, agenda number 0126, whereas city code section 2-151F establishes a city officer and employee residency review board.
I move this resolution be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a yea-nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second, second this resolution be received, recorded, filed, adopted by a yea-nay vote. On the question.
Mr. President, this resolution is simply to confirm Mayor Carney's appointments of Rourke Moore and Doreen Robinson to serve at the pleasure of the mayor as members of the city officer and employee residency review board.
All right, thank you. Seeing no hands raised, clerk, please call for the rule.
Councilwoman Owens.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Will Hour.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy.
Yes.
Councilwoman Field.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bracy.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Yes.
Councilwoman Spadola.
Yes.
President Congo.
Yes.
Eleven yeas and two absent.
Declared adopted.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading.
Ordinance, sorry, 25-062, agenda number 0127. An ordinance to amend Chapter 2 of the city code to repeal the defunct Wilmington Advisory Commission on Youth and Their Families, and to establish the Wilmington Youth Advisory Council under the auspices of city council.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend Chapter 2 of the city code to repeal the defunct Wilmington Advisory Commission on Youth and Their Families, and to establish the Wilmington Youth Advisory Council under the auspices of city council.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer it to the Health, Aging, and Disabilities Committee.
Second. Second.
It's been properly moved and second that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer it to the Health, Environmental, Aging, and Disabilities Committee. Councilmember Spadola.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading.
Ordinance number 25-063, agenda number 0128. An ordinance to amend Chapter 2 of the city code to require all legislative and administrative bodies of the city to provide members of the public a way to participate in public meetings virtually.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend Chapter 2 of the city code to require all legislative and administrative bodies of the city to provide members of the public a way to participate in public meetings virtually.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer it to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer it to the Finance and Economic Development Committee. This time, we will move to petitions and communications, starting with Councilmember Field.
Nothing tonight, Mr. President. Sure?
All right, say so. All right, Councilmember Owens.
Yes. There's a few things coming up. On October 28th, there's an intro to grant writing being hosted at One Village Alliance in the 1st District. And then at the same location on October 30th, they are offering a skate class to learn how to skate, also at One Village Alliance on Halloween, October 31st. If you're looking for somewhere safe to bring your children, the Powdus, their annual haunted house. And then at the Wilmington Drama League on October, well, October 16th to 19th, they have the Angels in America. If you can't make it to any of that, on November 6th to 9th, they have the Trail to Oregon. Feel free to stop by either one of those performances, they always do a great job. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to congratulate Nathan Fields on his new daughter. I act like he's not all happy back there. Yeah, right. Next, Mr. President, is it possible that the new clerk could introduce herself, because I never met her before? It's our first time seeing her. Oh, okay. Oh, okay, never met. Congratulations. Yeah, public, okay. Next, I would like to thank every, I'd like to thank the Thomas Edison School in Delmar Power for having that event over there for individuals to come. Delmar Power brought out their new mobile van, and we had over maybe about 100, 175 people who came out from throughout the city to get assistance with their Delmar Power bill, and it is a lot of people out there struggling. It was one block, the whole block was disconnected. So it's a lot of issues going on in Wilmington that we, as council members, try to address to the best of ability. You know, as everybody know, the bills are not what they used to be. You know, they have a delivery bill now that's additional $200, $300, and it's hard out there for a lot of people. So I'd like to really give kudos to Ms. Austin and Delmar Power for bringing their mobile van in the community and allowing people to make payment arrangements. And also Delaware Energize for coming out, allowing people to get additional $300 for, towards their Delmar bill. So it was a really nice turnout. And I'd like to thank Maria Cabrera for showing up, Kobe stopped by, and I just appreciate all councils' support. I'd like to announce that it is an event at YMCA where they're gonna be honoring, I have the date, I don't have the exact date, I think it's next week, the 24th, honoring Harmon Carey, his wife, Eunice Wallace, Stephanie Bowden, the 86th Annual, so it should be really nice if anyone's looking for something to do. And the Y also does something for Thanksgiving, and that will, and I'd like to say, thank Mr. President for a nice time down to the homecoming. I really enjoyed the tent, the private area you had down there with everything free, so I really appreciate all the free stuff. It was really nice, though, but thanks a lot, I enjoyed myself at homecoming. Thank you. That would be all.
I don't know what you're talking about. Councilmember Harley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I have a few announcements. My first one is that I want to mention that one of my communities in the 4th District, as it relates to affordable housing, we are definitely moving forward in terms of affordable housing. For those that don't know, we completed the Norman Oliver Estates over on Hill Street, which are affordable housing. We have the Elbra Palmer School that is going to be coming up shortly, the Southbridge Community, we are meeting to talk about what that's going to look like. And we have the San Kofa Place, which is on B and Newcastle Avenue. And lastly, I want to thank Reverend Curry and the Easyon Fair Baptist Church on a wonderful, beautiful project and ribbon cutting that was conducted on Sunday. It is another, another project that we are completing over in the Southbridge community. I know affordable housing is a hot topic, and everyone is talking about it, so I wanted to make sure that the community is aware of these particular townhomes that are in the Southbridge community, and that the Senator Darius and Mother Agnes Brown Senior Community, that's a long name, but I want to make sure I got it right, they are accepting applications for the townhomes that we did the ribbon cutting for on Sunday, and the applications are available at 1400 B Street, Holden Center, and the number to call is 302-510-4548. So I just wanted to make sure that the community is aware of what's going on in the 4th District over in Southbridge. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Will Hour.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to make a couple of announcements about events going on this weekend. On Saturday, October 18th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., there's gonna be a Walkable Communities Workshop focused on Lancaster Avenue and West Second Street. The meeting is at 301 North Harrison, and residents, businesses are invited to come out and make, make your ideas known for how to make those streets safer and improve the quality of life. So that's on Lancaster Avenue and West Second Street. The event's on Saturday, October 18th, 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., and we're gonna meet at 301 North Harrison Street. Also, on Sunday, there's gonna be a United Neighbors event on the bridge, the 7th Street Bridge between Adams and Jackson Street. That's gonna be a community event with food and art, music, and celebration. Everybody's invited, hope to see you there. And then on Wednesday, October 29th, at the Rodney Reservoir, the city of Wilmington is doing a fall festival. The Rodney Reservoir recently opened up again. Thank you very much to the city of Wilmington for creating a new park at the Rodney Reservoir, and all the residents who helped with that effort. And there's gonna be, it's gonna be a really fun time with a moon bounce, trunk-or-treat, mobile petting zoo, face painting, fall games, fall book reading, and it's gonna end the night with the showing of the Haunted Mansion movie. The event starts at 6:00 p.m. Bring blankets and lawn chairs, everybody's invited.
All right, thank you.
That's all I have tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember McCoy.
Thank you. I do have a question, though. Do I, do I have to go to DSU to get to that party, whatever y'all have?
What party?
I had to, I had to be in a lull to get there. All right. So I actually have a few things. First, I would like to start by congratulating Doreen Robinson, who is actually not only a resident of the 6th District, but she's also the president of Brown Town Civic Association, and she just did the appointment that Councilwoman Bracy just read for the Employee Residency Review Board. So I just want to congratulate her on that. I'd just like to also state that the Edgeville Civic Association, they will be having their monthly meeting. It is gonna be next Tuesday, October 21st, same location, which is MSK Community Center, 1009 Sycamore Street, and they normally begin at 6:30. Also, I have one more thing I wanted to mention is that we, we were able to put together a fall outing for the youth of the city of Wilmington at Milburn Orchids, okay? So it's gonna be on Sunday, November 2nd. I do realize that it is the Senior Thanksgiving Ball, but it's gonna be early. So, Sunday, November 2nd, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., we have put out a post stating that, you know, all those who are interested, first come, first served, that they could sign up to go to the Milburn Orchids? Orchards? Orchards. Sorry about that. And it has been out, although I organized it, I have so many sponsors, I have all of my at-large members, so I thank you guys so much for participating. Councilmembers Bracy, Cabrera, Hackett, and Spadola have also contributed to this, to this event. So we hope that our young people and their chaperones have a great time.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Bracy.
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Cabrera.
Let it be noted that I have nothing tonight, first, and maybe the last time. Councilmember Will Hour was gonna mention the event at the reservoir, she did a great job announcing it.
But you did cook chili today.
But yes, thank you.
Wow.
But there is chili available.
Councilmember Hackett.
Nothing for tonight.
Councilmember Spadola.
Nothing tonight, Council President.
All right, thank, I just want to thank everybody for tuning in, thank everyone who joined us this evening. Again, if any of us on council can be of any assistance in any way, just please call us at the office, 302-576-2140. Again, our number is 302-576-2140. You are also welcome to join us every first and third Thursday here in council chambers for council meetings, and throughout the month for our committee meetings. But to get those, those schedules and dates, just call us at the city council office. I also would like to ask everyone to please keep former council member Sam Guy in your prayer. He is currently hospitalized, and I will give you updates as I, as I find out. And with that, I will accept the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
It's been first and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.